Per the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Mayor Keim.
Here.
Alderman Dobbs.
Here.
Alderman Feige.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Bennett.
Here.
Alderman Einman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Alderman Prince. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. This time we'll move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Please approve.
Sorry.
Dang, that was a race. So a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. At this time, I think we have some representatives from St. Gene County Memorial Hospital here. You'd all like to come up. I do have a proclamation for Hospital Week, and it is the hospital's 55th anniversary. So, can't stand if you'd like for me to read this to you, I can. Read right to you. Whereas the St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital cornerstone laying took place May 30th, 1968, and was founded April 9th, 1969, admitting its first patient that same day, and today has been a cornerstone of health and wellness in our community for 55 years. And whereas the St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital and clinics have grown over the years and are celebrating its 55th anniversary of providing excellent, high-quality compassionate care to the community of St. Genevieve and surrounding communities, and whereas the mission of St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital is to put people first by providing excellent personalized and compassionate care with a dedicated staff of healthcare professionals, volunteers, and supporters that work tirelessly to ensure the highest standards of patient care, innovation, and community service. St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital has continuously evolved to meet the changing healthcare needs of our community, expanding services, implementing advanced technologies, and fostering partnerships to enhance healthcare accessibility and quality. The St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital provides over 30 different departments of services such as women's health and wellness, diagnostic imaging, and cancer care, employing over 500 employees. St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital offers several specialty physician services such as pediatrics, ENT, cardiology, general surgery, OB-GYN, internal medicine, urology, orthopedics, and podiatry. St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital is dedicated to facilitating learning opportunities by offering community outreach services such as health fair screenings and wellness programs in an effort to keep the community at optimum health. And the St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital has formed the auxiliary consisting of over 175 community members with the purpose of enhancing patient care, supporting the hospital's growth through means of fundraising at the hospital gift shop, bake sales, and selling handmade baby quilts. St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital has formed the Friends Foundation to invest in the improvement and long-term growth of health services such as infant security system and the surgery center expansion with major community fundraising events including the Black Tie Gala, the Taste of St. Genevieve, and Ride to Survive. Therefore, I, Brian Keim, Mayor of the City of St. Genevieve, do hereby proclaim the 55th anniversary of St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital in the City of St. Genevieve this ninth day of May 2024 in recognition of 55 years of service to the community. Right. And also, we would like to represent a couple longtime members of the St. Gen Fire Department. I believe we have Bob Bunnell and Charlie Wivelmeyer here, maybe? Like to come forward. This is to recognize Bob Bunnell for an outstanding commitment and 46 years of dedication as a volunteer fireman serving St. Gen. And then Charlie Wivelmeyer, 44 years. Well, too short. At this time, we will move to the city administrator's report.
We have an event report at your seats. A couple of items added, item six, everybody knows about the storms from yesterday, hail and lots of rain, especially the rain that ended up being north and west of us, hit those river or hit the creeks, and the creeks then flooded the city as it all worked its way towards the Mississippi. So, had some road closures. Ended up cleaning up everything today. Steve and his guys got all the roads cleaned up, and we're in good shape. Question from the last meeting, and Alderman Steiger also followed up with me a couple days ago, talked with Jamie Edman with the Juret Fett Committee. She says they have finally received their funds from the insurance company. They have contracted with the contractor to replace that one section that was damaged, so from the bridge along the street. She didn't have a start time, and I didn't get all the contractor to find out when he was going to start, but they have finally, she had to follow through with the insurance company to get the funds. Yeah, so a little bit, little bit extra effort on her part. Any questions about the rest of the report?
That was for repair only?
Yep.
Rest of the bridge must be in sturdy condition?
So, she is also wondering, the city has talked about extending or using a tap grant to come through the Juret Fett property and redo that bridge and then put a sidewalk down St. Mary's Lane. She doesn't want to invest in a new bridge if we're going to end up doing a project. So at some point, she may be here to talk to the board personally to say, what is your, what is the board's intentions in the future? And then she can make a decision on what to do with the rest of the bridge.
Happy, item number six. Do we have any clarification at all for MoDOT? Like, this project's been talked about for years. Like, do we have a project number? Do we know if it's funded? What can we do to get some clarity on that?
On the pipes?
Yeah.
As far as I know, there's not funded. Nothing on the step. They're going to repave mill and pave 32 this summer. As far as I know, there's no, there's nothing on the books to do that, that improvement that we want.
Okay. I just think we need, we need to be clear about that somehow in the fact that we're not sitting and waiting for that to be done, like, there's no schedule for it. So, we probably owe that to everybody, just to be clear about that, like, any kind of improvement to that under, under road.
Shoes, as much you're talking about.
Yeah, it's just a bad rumor, and it needs to probably, we need to squelch it if we can.
Right. I mean, we sent pictures from yesterday, and I think one of the owners of Shoes made a phone call to MoDOT to let them know again, but just an inch and a half in 45 minutes, this is where it's at. It was right up on their parking lot on the, on the side.
Right. I, certainly, I don't suggest that there's anything that you need to do or anything we need to do. We're not at fault here, but it's just this perpetuation of this rumor that this is going to happen, and it's the same status for three or four years now.
Right.
So we need to go on the record, I think, and to say, hey, this is, this is not a project that we know about. It's not happening. So, okay.
They did have some kind of a timeframe where they were supposed to start doing something with it next year?
As far as I know, all they're doing is milling and paving this summer. I don't know if there's a, a project date that's scheduled for it. I've not been told about that.
Right.
We'll keep on it, though. We'll keep doing what we can to see if we can get them motivated.
Any other questions, comments? This time, we will move to staff reports. First tonight will be David Bova, Assistant City Administrator.
Good evening, everyone. You have our reports there. It's top Heritage Commission, meant a few weeks ago, approved a couple of COAs. We have a pretty healthy agenda for May 20th, so that meeting will occur. Building permits issued has risen a little bit here lately. Lot of roofing, but there are a lot of projects picking up, same reason that Heritage Commission is going to have a fairly large agenda. On the second page, the improvements of the ferry landing, I did finally hear a small piece of information from Union Pacific today that it is working, the request to do that parking lot is working its way up the chain of command. So, the contact that I had that reached out to real estate has reached out to her boss. So hopefully we'll hear.
Fairly positive, then.
Yeah. Flood plan management, happy to talk a little bit about the situation yesterday. So the river stage was to drop to 27 feet, but was back up to about 30.1 early this morning and is predicted to go to 32.4 on Sunday. We have some more rain in the forecast, so we'll have to see what happens if it approaches 34. We'd be talking about closing some gates on the north end of town. And that's about all of half our report, unless you have any questions.
David, I have one question. You mentioned that closing of the gates. I know we used to do it with our own city employees. I mean, are we under contract with Alliance to do that?
It was to cover what the public works did prior to that, so they would be responsible for it.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Next up, Chief Steiger.
Good evening, everyone. You should have copied my report. I'll start off by saying thank you to the board for recognizing our guys. They've spent a lot of time here, and we appreciate what they did. It's great to see that. Probably the biggest thing we'd talk about was, we had 23 calls in April, which, as the notes say, is 13 ahead of last year, and as of yesterday, we had now 103 calls. So we're less than, just right out of court the way through the year, we're already a third of what we had last year. So, we keep at this current pace. We will top out over 300 calls this year for the first time ever. We did lose one guy. We gave him a chance, and it didn't work out, so we let him go. And then probably the other biggest thing is working on grants. The last radio grant that we got was for the handhelds. I've got the batteries and the charger invoices, but I haven't seen the radios yet, still no date or timeline on that. And I started the work on the 2024 ARPA grant, the $120,000 for turnout gear and hose. The first thing I had to do was sit through two-hour webinar on how to go through the grants, so once they show that in the thing, then they can award the contract where I can go and actually start getting bids and things like that. So hopefully by next meeting, I'll be able to come to you guys with some requests for approvals to purchase some hose and stuff. Open, any questions?
Chief, did you get any kind of preliminary numbers back on the event the other night, on Tuesday night?
The community is very generous. In actual sales, we got 10%. I think we ended up around $250 donated by McDonald's, and the community itself actually outdid that. We had like $300 donated. We didn't go out asking for it. We had a booth sitting there. If they wanted to, then we would accept it. We ended up over $300 for the community, so they did really good for us. We appreciate that. And that does go to our firemen's fund, which by so it is the snacks and stuff for the guys. We don't take that out of the city budget. Thanks for the question. Thanks for reminding.
Yeah.
Good thing to say.
I thought it was great. My five-year-old son loved every minute of it, so.
Anybody else?
Kenny, I had one question that's come up a couple times and stuff. You know, with all these electric cars and stuff now, these huge batteries that are in them, I know you guys are in a lot of vehicles and extrication and that type of thing. Is there specialized training for that? Or I mean, it's got to be additional hazards there?
The biggest thing with the battery-operated cars is most of them that I've heard of and seen in the trainings that I've been to, isn't really one great big battery. It's a whole bunch of little individual cells. And the problem with those is once that individual cell shorts out, it shorts out the ones next to it and next to it, and it just keeps going out. They make some fancy tools where you pierce the battery and shoot water up in there, and they have fire blankets that you can drag across the top of a car and hopefully smother it out. But there's documented cases where the tow trucks are picking them up and going down the highway to their shop, and it fans it back up again. Actually, what a lot of the tow truck companies are doing are digging a pit in their yards, and when they bring in a vehicle like that that's had a fire, is they dump it in the pit and let it sit in water for a week or two, because that way the water can absorb through the battery pack and get in and finally extinguish everything. There's, everything that I've been through, I've spent numerous classes on it, there's no documented 100% guaranteed way to put out an electric vehicle fire. Most of them are saying protect exposures and do what you can to contain it. I've seen documented cases where it's been over 20,000 gallons of water and still don't have a fire out in some of the trainings I've been to.
I mean, just in a normal, when you're in there pulling somebody out, there's got to be additional hazards to your guys.
A little bit because of the high voltages that are involved.
Right.
But we're also running into the same kind of problem with the newer cars all have key fobs at start. That's basically the same thing with a newer vehicle that's not an electronic or electric vehicle, is the key fobs, as long as that's within so many feet of the car. If they happen to hit the start button or something, malfunctions, the car can start. So it's kind of like the same thing there. And with all the new hybrids and stuff like that, they actually, when they make these cars, have different colors for the wiring that shows different things. Yellow wires for safety measures and orange wires for high voltages and things. So when we go through, we actually peel off and look for those wires and see what it is first before we do the extrication.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
And next up, Tourism Director Aaron Smith.
Ladies and gentlemen, pleased to say that the future Tourism Director of St. Genevieve was born on Saturday, April 6, 2:14 PM. His name's Levy Lewis Smith. He's just a little cutie right now. You know, I'll train him up, and under my tutelage, he should be ready to go in about 20, 24 years, something like that, so. Yeah.
That long?
I knew there was going to be some sort of, something thrown out at the joke. So, yeah, my objective overview for the report is, last time I was talking about, you know, working in the visual language of St. Gene, planning that out. Now I'm going to be moving more into planning phase. We do have McDaniel's Master Plan, which helps us with our overarching brand and message to tourists, but there's a separate plan that I think needs to be made, which addresses communication among tourism-related organizations, wayfinding and beautification throughout the city and county, and a tallying of assets that we need to develop to become usable parts in the tourism equation. So I'm hoping to kind of build a calendar around doing that and as well as working with McDaniel's. Eclipse debrief, because my son was born on Saturday, I wasn't able to actually attend any of the eclipse events. I kind of got home at 1:00 PM, ate a sandwich, stood out under the eclipse with him, and then we took a three-hour nap. So I didn't get to see any of the splendor. I heard it was a really great event. We got a, a Pleasure AI report from CMO RPC that showed that we had 43,000 visitors in St. Genevieve County during that day. We're working to get data for the city with Pleasure AI. They, they have data where you can see like hotspots. We can tell how many people were at the community center, how many people were at the welcome center. I know the welcome center tallied about 950 people, which, yeah, that, I don't think they see that in three weeks, a month. So that was really good. And we had people from all over. Amanda Hutchings from Herald's Famous Bees reported meeting people from Wales, Scotland, the Caribbean, and she had a woman from Uganda, as well as nine different states. So I think this was a great event in terms of exposure. We've had a lot of emails at the Tourism Department saying like, hey, you know, we're from out of state. We came in, next time we're in Missouri, we'll definitely stop at St. Gene again. We loved it. So they really, they thought everybody was just great. They thought the town was charming. So I think we made a great impression there. And I would like, you know, we had a, a special group that we put together to help plan the events. I wanted to give some special thanks. Brad Arnold of the Community Center and Bob Wolk, they went above and beyond. Dina Kreitler, our own Mayor Keim, our own Joe Steiger, Cara Burditt, Aldabons, Claire Casey from the National Park, Amanda Schwent with all the design work she provided, Sean Long at the library, and Abigail Kern for coming through with the children's activities. And probably the best thing to come out of this was the group itself. I really want to keep this group together and have maybe like a quarterly meeting to kind of just not do so much directives, but just talk, you know, get on the same page, because these are kind of like the big movers and shakers in the Tourism Department. I brought in a couple of newspapers from Webster Kirkwood Times. Had one, gave one to Bob, gave one to Eric and, and Mike here. That's all I had left, because I've been bringing them around town. But we had a really cool editorial opportunity at the Queen's Ball this year. A young woman came down from Kirkwood to do some line dancing. She found the baby. She became the queen of St. Genevieve, and she was so excited. She came down the next week for the Mardi Gras wearing a crown. And then she was so excited about that, she came back during the house tours and stood at the Giebor Valet in full dress with her crown on. And so she's super excited about this. Well, her, her mother's also the, she's the director of the Historical Society for Kirkwood Webster, so I thought there was a lot of cool synergy there. So we brought her down. We did a big photo shoot with her, and then we, we sent that out to the Webster Kirkwood Times. It ended up on the front page of the Webster Kirkwood Times. It also was their spring day trips issue, so they wrote a big editorial about St. Gene in that day trips issue. So I thought that was really huge for us. I love editorials because, you know, people, people, when they, when someone writes about St. Gene in an organic sort of way, people go, oh, this is a place I need to look at. Instead of putting an ad in front of them, it's a, it's a different sort of reaction. So I thought that was very cool. Last meeting, I told you we hired a social media coordinator. Her name's Hannah Walker. She's here with us tonight. Her parents are from New Mexico. They moved here in, what, 2017, was it? 2017, I think they actually remodeled the house that I've been in, so they've been providing a lot of good things to the community by buying houses and restoring them, and, and she's been great for our social media. She provides daily content, and I think we're getting a lot of good movement. She's actually been hired by a bunch of organizations in town to keep up with their social media, so that, that's good. It kind of keeps our, keeps us in the know and keeps us having a cohesive look across social media. I think that's going to be important. Last thing I have, we have the MMG and the MPD grants. That's our matching grants for the state. According to McDaniel's plan, the entirety of our MMG budget will go to digital and print advertising over a six-month period instead of the whole year. That means no TV, no radio, and we're only doing six months because they really want to efficiently use the money during our, our biggest tourism hotspots during the year. And then most of the digital budget will go to Facebook and Google Ads. $3,000 per month will be spent on that. I'm excited about this because it not only get, uses effective algorithms to reach the right audience, but it gives us some powerful information on who engages with our posts, their demographic, that sort of thing. And then the print ads will go into three magazines, Missouri Life, St. Louis Magazine, and Midwest Living. Midwest Living is a regional magazine that has huge circulation, so we're going to spend a good bit of our budget just doing one ad with them per year, but I think that's really nice. And then I had them change the preservation magazine to St. Louis Magazine, because like I was talking about with the Webster Kirkwood Times, I think we can really parlay spending money with them into getting some editorials written, and I think that'll be really nice. So, any questions?
Aaron, I just want to point out, this Kirkwood Webster Grove, those are 36,000 people delivered to their homes or apartments, condos, and it's handed out free at Schnupps. So, and it is the right demographic for us. So it's great work on your part coordinating that and getting a queen who went beyond one night to like Cinderella.
I keep, I keep saying we have to get the foundation to rig this, this event every year, so we can get this. What are we going to target next, Chesterfield?
The other target on the social media, what's our TikTok presence?
Our TikTok presence? I, I recently just had to reach out to Toby. He had our Visit St. Gene password to visit St., the Visit St. Gene TikTok, and I had been using visitstgen.com, and I just didn't like it. And, you know, we've been working with Hannah. She's been doing a lot of stuff on Instagram, but I did, I had posted, posted some videos. It got some good views. I need to just get back on there, but wanted to make sure our Instagram was really solid first. And then who knows what's happening with TikTok at this point?
It is very solid. The Instagram account and those quick little videos you put together are really, are action. They're really well, well done.
Yeah, thank you.
Professionally.
That's what I bring to the table. And Hannah. Anything else? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Aaron. This time, we'll move to public comment.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jeremiah. I've been here since June after. I put down like over a thousand bucks for deposit on the house. I got tired of running from the police for I speed pursuing a sports car, so I figured. I burned the clutch of my car three times, and my dad said it was time to buy a house, so I did. So here I am. Question I have is, for the winter time, I want to try and stock up on firewood. It gets expensive, because I enjoy burning firewood, not to catch, not to get my house to catch on fire, but do I need a permit to like cut wood over by, by the ferry, by the, by the Mississippi River, so I can like stock up on wood, so I can let it heal for six months is my question.
It's outside state limits.
Yeah, you're fine. The property owners are, I don't know if there's any public land down there. I know at some places in public ground, you can get a firewood permit, and some like state forests, you can get a firewood permit, but if it's private property, of course you have to. Okay. Have owner permission. Okay, I apologize. I just came down from the VFW. I'm here Veterans of Foreign Wars. I'm signing up with them, so I'm trying to, I've been, I've been getting to, what is that called, my mom's older sister, she has a daughter, she's seven years younger than me. She's jostling my success. She's been trying to hold me back, but please, I apologize for any like family issues that I've been having, nothing to do with nobody here. I just, I just got home from California, and my grandma, she kind of snitched her out, so everything's good now, fellas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Tonight, we will, we will hold a public hearing. The mayor and Board of Aldermen will hold a public hearing to consider a request from Dan Carver for a special use permit that will allow a financial services office at 658 Roser Street in an R1 single-family residential district. We will open this public hearing at 6:34.
Good evening again, everyone. Special use permit 004-24 was submitted on April 12 by Mr. Dan Carver to have a financial services office at 658 Roser. Filing fee was received on April 17. Notice of this meeting and the planning and zoning meeting were mailed to the applicant and the adjoining property owners on April 18. Application was sent to the Police Department and Fire Department also on April 18. Application was returned from the Police and Fire Department on April 24 with no issue. Meeting notice was sent to the media also on April 18 and posted in our, published in the Herald on April 24. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on May 2 and voted to approve recommendation to this board by a vote of 5, 1, 2 being absent. And that brings us to tonight for a hearing on May 9. In addition to the application that I provided you in the staff packet, the applicant has received 14 letters of support from 12 of the adjoining property owners and tenants.
Any questions?
No questions.
It's from the board. Mr. Carver, did you want to say anything at this time?
If anybody has any questions, I have to answer those. I've been coming down here since 2006. Brought up Bob Kest years ago. I'm here about one day a week, very quiet. Most of you probably don't even know who I am. And I'm just using the office one day a week. It's just me and one family. We have off-street parking, so I think it'll be a good use for that location.
Questions from the board? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other questions on that. We will go ahead and close that public hearing. We will go ahead and close that public hearing at 6:36.
From voting on this is different.
There is a, I believe there is a vote, correct?
You don't have any business.
Take us to tonight's consent agenda.
To approve.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Move to old business. We'll have a second reading of Bill number 4617. This is an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances for Chapter 140 Purchasing and Competitive Bidding Policy as set forth below.
Thanks.
Motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Eignman.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Fahy.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dobbs. Yes. Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4617 now becomes ordinance 4538.
Thank you very much. Take us to a second reading of Bill number 4618. This is an ordinance amending section 210.770 Cemetery Rules of the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances as set forth below.
To approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Dobbs. Yes. Alderman Fahy.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Eignman.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4618 now becomes ordinance 4539.
Thank you. Last, we'll have a second reading of Bill number 4619. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a revised cooperative agreement with St. Genevieve County for the collection of city taxes.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Fahy.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dobbs.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Eignman. Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4619 now becomes ordinance 45.
Thank you. We'll move to new business. At this time, we'll have a discussion regarding a dump truck bid for Public Works.
So we have come across another truck on Purple Wave. This one is, is nice or maybe a little better than the last one. We bid on the last one on cap was $105,000. We were short. We've come across another one and we'll be coming forward to the board. See if you're willing to allow us again to give us a cap on a number to purchase the truck. My recommendation is 155,000. Give us enough room to potentially purchase the truck. I think we stopped short on this one and may have missed out, but you can't tell. But we put in the max amount and we were outbid in the last 15 minutes.
Happy looking at some of the, I guess, the savings we kind of ran into with the backhoe and some of those things. I mean, we've saved a substantial amount of money, haven't we, in rebuilding the one backhoe we were going to replace? And of course bringing back the second one was a pretty minor thing and stuff. So, you know, if anybody's ever been on Purple Wave, these trucks like this don't come along this often. It just happened, there's two of them here close together. But I think with, you know, with the better maintenance we're doing on equipment, you know, we're going to see some of that savings coming down the road next year. And so I think we need to go more on this truck. And I think that's the right move and we need this truck. We're down to one truck right now.
Yeah. Yeah, one, you know, truck is in the shop with the, to the PTO issue?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we have no hydros. So.
What do you need on this tonight?
Just to, give me a, give me a top number that we can spend because we've got, we've got enough money in the capital improvement, in the capital improvements line item. If we put together what we have for the truck and what we didn't spend on the backhoe. So again, I'm saying 155,000. That would give us about 140,000 to bid up to. And then the, the extra that would be in the fees. Yeah.
What was that? I recommend that.
Better motion?
Yeah.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
Someone's.
Can we clarify the motion real quick?
155,000.
With fees and everything.
So total all in 155. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, correct? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Take us to a first reading of Bill number 4620. This is an ordinance approving a special use permit for Dan Carver that will allow the operation of a financial services office at 658 Roser Street.
To approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
First reading of Bill number 4621. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for construction cost sharing with St. Genevieve R2 School District for water main improvements on Maple Drive from Knight Street to Virginia Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second.
You need urgency to go ahead with the second reading.
You should call.
Yeah, call.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Are you motion?
Motion.
Well, I'm just asking for discussion.
Sure.
I mean, we, we have worked with them to say that we were going to probably read it over two meetings. And that if we had, had not been able to get this together tonight, we would have two readings at the next meeting. So, I mean, we planned it that they can probably move forward knowing that you voted for it once. I don't see it coming back the second time. We shot this decision.
Well, minus, I'll have to.
Dr. Taylor, that timeline works for, for your end, I assume?
Depends on who you ask. If you ask Colin, he would say, you know, sooner we can get it up there. But I agree with Abby as well. You have a first approval. I think that gives them some assurance on their end.
As comfortable first reading and then we'll do a second reading at the following meeting?
Is, is work started on, or is work going to start on it before the next meeting? On, on this particular part of it?
It's anticipated within three to four weeks to start.
Yeah, we were outside that. I just want to make sure.
Okay, so save the second reading for the meeting on the 23rd. Are you okay with that?
Can we have some discussion on potential? We'll have to decide now, but at a future meeting, there was the option to upgrade this to a concrete street instead of asphalt. This includes an asphalt street. There's about a $64,000 price increase to go to concrete for 900 and something feet, I think, of street. I think is what it was. Some, yeah.
That's kind of separate from the water main.
Yeah, yeah. But as we go forward with this project, I'd like to talk about that with the, with the school to be able to look at doing that. I think that would be a smart decision to go with the concrete. I know it's a little bit more, but we've seen.
Traffic on that.
Yeah, there'll be a lot, a lot of school buses, you know. Trash trucks going up there emptying dumpsters, you know. I know Alderman Prince would definitely agree with me on, on that.
Trash trucks.
Yeah.
Going to ice. Hey, they would go, a lot of ice would go. A lot of snow cones.
Any other discussion on that at this time? All right, any other business to bring forth at this time from the board?
There's, yeah, there's a MML meeting, a regional one in Arnold on May 14th. I don't know if anybody from City Hall, they're having their regional MML meeting in Arnold on May 14th, I believe.
I'm unaware of that. We went to the one down in Poplar Bluff, which is the southeast region. I wonder if that's, that's a different region.
Yeah. This was metro east, so I don't know if we call it metro east.
No, we're in the southeast.
Southeast.
So we went to Poplar Bluff on, David Bubba and I went on Tuesday.
Well, you kind of went to the Arnold and saved yourself a couple hours drive.
Yeah. Not my group, man.
Yeah. And then also.
It's very municipal league. So that we belong to a lobbying organization and, you know, a group that helps benefit the cities through the, through statewide effort out of Columbia. So you also have, I'm sorry, yes. So I put that in your box. That's who offers that is very municipal league. And they have a conference that'll be coming up in September.
One other thing happy on, on MML. I saw also that they released their new salary study survey. And it said it had like 220 positions over like 46 municipalities, or I could have those flip flops. But it'd be interesting to kind of compare what our salary set came up with this new one that MML and how it can kind of compares.
Yeah. We're not requested it yet, but we, we came across it, so we'll do that.
Any other discussion at this time? Call tonight's work session to order. We'll move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Work session item number one, we're going to be discussing fire districts.
This is my first official work session, so you'll have to bear with me on this one. For those that aren't aware of it, a couple of years ago, we formed a recruitment retention committee and we used three aldermen, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Dunman, and at the time, and Ms. Arm Rooster, Ashley. We talked about things to do that can improve. There's the amount of people we have and we've made some progress in that direction. One of the things I had been using in far as kind of a sounding block for what's going on with the fire department and asking their opinions and keeping them up in the local, some of the information I'm finding. Probably the best way to start this off is we also have an association of county fire chiefs, which I sit on as a county fire chief, obviously. And they have been in discussion, we've discussed it many times, about potentially becoming a county-wide fire district because of the potential income that makes available. In some of our research, we found out that if we would join the county, our class four ISO rating we have in the city would drop to a class six. So at that time, I told this county that we were not interested in being part of that. We think it's a good thing, but because we couldn't justify the ISO class change, we decided not to participate in that. At the last chiefs meeting, they did talk about, and they are at this point planning on taking it to a vote of the public in April of next year. So what I'm looking for tonight is a, I guess, an idea from the board of what do you want to see come out of this department? Would you like us to stay municipal and keep going status quo? If so, we have some issues coming up money-wise that we're going to start addressing pretty soon. Or if you want to give us permission to proceed towards a fire district, I'm looking for what does the board want out of our department? I don't know. Happy, I think you passed your out papers.
So they've got a map. This is, this shows you the city limits and then the area that St. Genevieve covers. It's never been formally adopted, never been formally surveyed and showed that this is St. Genevieve's area. But there's an agreement, I guess, between all of the fire districts.
Yes. Mutual aid. This mutual aid then?
Let's start off with a couple of definitions. Okay, we are a municipal fire department. Everybody in the county, with the exception of St. Mary and us, are fire department or fire associations. They get confusion on district versus department versus associations. Basically, what a fire association is, is a group of volunteers that come together and join and make a department for fire protection services. So we are municipal department and we are called a fire department. The rest of them are fire associations. So there's a, actually Bloomsdale gets a little bit of credit for municipal, but they're still an association. So basically what we're looking at is they're going to try to do that. And we looked at ISO ratings for them too. And ISO for them would be a six, they figure countywide. So a couple of them will improve, a couple will stay the same, and one of them will actually step down a little bit. But that, that's kind of the talk about it. The borders themselves were set up along the range of the Catholic churches years ago. So wherever the Catholic Church for City of St. Genevieve claims is their area is what the fire department claims. Obviously, the city limits is the city limits, but outside the rural area, we go where the Catholic Church was. Zell takes the Zell Catholic Church, parish boundaries. And it's all just a gentleman's agreement at this point. We fill fire tags in the area that's allotted to us and they do the same.
So what is your recommendation?
I recommend that we at least attempt it once. I don't know, happy gave you this. I made some notes up.
No, you can pass that.
Okay. I made some notes a few days ago and we had a meeting at City Hall. And what I did was basically put down some of my thoughts on some of the current challenges we have and some of the future challenges that I foresee. One of the big ones that we're talking about is right now, obviously prices of everything are going up. So prices for equipment, et cetera, is a deal. We're all aware of the fact that manpower is an issue for volunteers. Trying to get people and keep them is hard to do, especially volunteer. And just, these are some of the things that I thought are current challenges. And if you look at the future challenges, one of the things is an aging fleet of our fire trucks. On the top line underneath the truck, it says NFPA says that a fire truck should be in first line service for 15 years and then reserve status for another five, and then it should be down the road. If you look at the ages of some of our vehicles right now, our first out of Tac bumper is 18 years old. That's our 2006. And right now with the time it takes to build them, even if you order it today, it would take at least two years to get it here. So by the time that truck would get here, if we would order it today, that truck would be 20 years old according to NFPA standards, not be serviceable. We all know that it's a guideline. And right now we have a 1993 out there that runs and we're keeping it running. So that truck's already 31 years old. So there's going to be a need for some vehicle replacements in near future. We have started talking, my staff, about what we think we need for the next truck, which is basically a mirror to our 2006 with a little bit different cap. In October of last year, the initial estimate was 1,078,000 and several hundred dollars. After January 1, they had a price increase done by the manufacturers and we made a couple of minor changes. And now the projected cost of that was 1.2 million dollars. And the last month, I passed along to Alderman Rainey and Dunman that Cummins is going to change their engines and they anticipate another 55 to 88,000 dollar increase for the engine. And there's going to be some engineering problems and things like that they're going to have to work through. So this cost of this truck is probably going to be in the 1.3 million dollar range right now if we were to order it. Talked to a friend of mine that actually is a dealer and talks of finances. The mayor can appreciate that. If we bought a truck at 1.2 million dollars, the average going right now for a 10-year lease is 6%. And that would mean 159,000 dollars a year for the next 10 years. So if we're going to stay a city, we need to come up with some ideas on how we're going to come up with that kind of money because that's a lot of money to try to get a truck. We do a real good job with maintenance and I guess kind of sometimes we're our own worst enemy. We keep everything looking nice and running good, so we don't really come asking for a lot. But it's getting to the point now where we're going to have to do something age-wise. ISO, whenever they do your rating, look at the age of your vehicles and look at the pumping capacity and the water availability and everything. And right now we get credit for it because they all are passing the test. That's part of the annual certifications I do on ladder certification and pump testing and things like that. As long as it will meet that requirement, they will continue to count it. But it's the one still a 30-year-old truck and we got another one that's going to be 20 years old in two years. So we haven't run any hard numbers, but we anticipate that if we would go to a fire district, the assessed valuation for $100 that's used whenever they vote them in is 30 cents on the $100. We estimate the City of St. Jen would bring in about 265,000, which is already about 70,000 more than what my current budget is. And the, some of the other major manufacturers and thing that lay outside the city would also have a fairly decent assessed valuation. would also have a fairly decent assessed valuation. We estimated potentially a quarter million dollars from Mississippi Lime. So the budget would go up substantially, which would give us money to purchase vehicles and potentially hire some people and put them out of station where they could run out first out and not have to wait for the volunteers to drive the firehouse, get in the truck, and then go out too. But bottom line, what I'm looking for is how do you guys want us to proceed? Would you like us to stay municipal? If so, we need to start looking at addressing some of these not-too-distant future needs for replacing vehicles. I think we've done our part in grants and things, trying to keep up with new equipment and doing what we can from our side of it. But eventually, it comes to the point where I have to come to you guys and say what can we do and what do we need to do? So at this point, I'm kind of, at that point, what do you guys want to see from us? And I'm open to questions or anything that we can help with.
Any one thing wanted to clarify, and so when you talk about municipal departments, St. Jen and St. Mary's, those are taxpayer supported?
Correct, everybody else sells fire tags.
Everybody else realizes on fire tags and donate?
Shooting matches and things like that.
Right. So that's why they are looking at a way of funding out in the county over and above what they do now, which is pretty basic and takes a lot of work and stuff, but.
There's been some talk about settling departments, especially on the north end, about mergers for the last few years. And that may happen whether or not they get a district through. Because the day of the volunteer fire departments, back when I joined, I had a waiting list. Now, I could put six or seven guys on right now with the roster that I have available. So that's a way to combine manpower and everything. And that's something that also we've done with the automatic mutual aid on first alarms. It used to be we just went and did it ourselves. Now we're calling for help because we need the help and they're needing us too. So that's why there's automatic mutual aid on house fires. We had ISO come in and Alderman Rainey and Dunham came out and sat through it, and they saw some of the stuff that we have to go through to get their ratings. And we talked about manpower. You guys remember how much manpower they like to have? They'd like to have 18 full-time people on a fire, but you only get credit for one full-time person for every volunteer, three volunteers you have. So for us to have the number that they would want us to have for ISO, we'd have to have 40 firefighters. And even with our mutual aid on a good day, we're probably only average 12 or 14 guys.
Yeah, this ISO thing is a pretty complicated.
Yep.
And a brutal way to raise and stuff, but what that ISO rating does, basically, it affects each one of our property and building insurance rates that we pay our insurance companies. So that's the other incentive for us to keep that rating where we're at.
There is a potential, and I'm not going to give you any false guarantees, that if we do go to a career department and we have some manpower, that we might be able to get it to a three, but it's going to take a lot of work even with that. So I can't guarantee you going to a district is going to give us a three. I know it'll make it a lot easier to maintain the four, which helps the difference between the three or four and a six. From what I understand, it's a couple hundred dollars a year per person for their house homeowners insurance. And we just did a ballpark number on 30 cents assessed valuation for a $100,000 home, that's $57 a year for a person.
I'm sorry, Kenny, so what was the scenario where we would go from a four, two, or three?
Potentially, if we hire, go full-time as a fire district and hire some people, there is the potential that hiring some people and doing some extra things might get us to three. I'm not going to make any false guarantees.
Yeah, because the other flip side of the coin, you were saying we potentially could go down to a six because the whole district gets rated the same?
Okay, we're not talking about joining the county district, they're going on their own. What I'm looking for is do we want to do our own separate district here in the city? Is if we do it on our own, we don't get rated on what they're capable of, we get rated on what we're capable of. So in talking to the ISO guy and the research I've done, we could maintain our class four if we went to a district and have a little bit better funding and not have to come to you guys for a million dollars here in the next year.
Would that district be what's on this map, in P? The area that you cover now with fire tags, would that all be encompassed under the district?
As of right now, this would be the plan. The county doesn't realize it yet, I don't think, but because we do not tax outside the city limits, if they set their boundaries, they could actually survey in, from what I understand, our coverage area out in the rural area and take that from us, which would potentially take Mississippi Lime, Tower Rock, and some of the other major contributors to our system out of our reach. But if we go at the same time, which is what I'm thinking, I would like to see us do, attempt it in April of next year also. Going simultaneous, you can't have two districts lying for the same area. So they would at least give us that time to try to get our area in without pulling away from us.
I know this has been discussed for years, and it seems like now with our bond issue on the place, it seems like an unfortunate time to try to go to the taxpayers again with another.
Or is it the best time? And it's the proper future planning for how we fund the fire department that we're going to need a couple million dollars for new trucks in the next three to four years.
Right. From a taxpayer's standpoint, they're going to look at it as two big taxes coming up with a very, very short election process.
One of the things we have discussed, the two guys, is if we go to district, you guys would no longer have control of the fire department, go to a separate elected board, similar to the ambulance district. And my current budget could go back into general revenue or whatever you guys all fit for my budget to go back in.
What would happen with the fire, the actual building?
That would be up to the board to decide what they want to do. We were hoping to have a fire district attorney here that talks, specializes in that. What he suggests and what most departments do is just turn it over to the newly formed district because they have no further use for it.
It'll be in city limits, but it would be owned by the new fire district?
Yes.
Sure, we're doing the welcome center or something like that.
Right.
Kenny, is there any statistics out there? I know the term, since we've been talking about this, the term fire district is nothing new. There's a lot of them out there.
Yeah.
You don't have to go far to hear fire district when you talk about other departments and stuff. But there's no numbers out there that says.
I could do the research and tell you how many districts are. Fire districts, a lot of them, the older ones started back in the 60s and 70s is when they actually started doing them. St. Francis County right now has four fire districts. The last one voted in was Wolf Creek Fire Protection District. They went from a fire association similar to what our county guys are and became a district they got voted in.
And takes up a big portion of the western part of our county.
Yeah, a big chunk of it.
Do they have any professional support organizations for, you know, like we have the M and L, Missouri Municipal League. The counties have the County Association League, I can't remember what the acronym is for that, but the fire districts have such a thing, do you know of any?
Yeah, there's a Missouri Fire District Association.
So probably we have some numbers because, you know, to maybe answer some of your questions on that. Because they are way more common than they were 20, 30, 40 years ago.
Yeah, Mike, and he was talking about this, the attorney that specialized, Mike and I did attend the meeting. And one of the things, the attorney and his daughter, which is the attorney also, he's kind of retiring, but spoke about how hard that would be to encompass seven districts into one fire district and basically advised against it.
They advised against it, but I don't know that the county could do it individually. And talking to Wolf Creek Fire District and getting what their initial cost was, they estimated they spent between $15,000 and $20,000 in retainers for the legal advice and for the surveys to have the property all drawn up and legally bound and everything, and then election fees and things like that. Obviously, we can't spend tax money on that, but what they did was a rural association that they belong to donated the money to the potential fire district and let them pay out of the thing. So the question would be also come up, if we do proceed with this, can we use the rural fire fund, which is not tax money, to help support some of that too? So that would be a discussion that need to be had too.
The county fire department and their associations, if St. Jen would start their own district, then it would look like how many districts potentially would go on the ballot in April?
Two, City of St. Genevieve and then the county as a whole.
For the rest of the?
For the rest of it. And if we go simultaneous, my thoughts were we can not only use the fact that the whole county is trying to do it as a show of need, but also we can benefit from that, that the reason we're not going with the county is because your ISO rating, we're looking out for best interest of the city by maintaining our class four versus dropping in with them and dropping to a six, which would cost more tax, or more home insurance money.
So you should keep in mind, this is, this would be an effort to create a new political subdivision. It would not be the city doing this. So this would be a petition that would be filed with the state court. I have to have 100 signatures on the request. It's going to be a hearing, and then the judge authorizes that there would be a vote within that district, and it would create a new political subdivision. The city would not be the applicant, the city would not be creating it. Now, having said that, they'd have a hard time getting it passed if the city officials were against it. And then if it get, if and when it would get created, then we would have to have formal discussions with regard to the assets of the fire department and what you're going to do with that, with those assets and I don't know what kind of liabilities there are, if there's any long-term debt of either the vehicles or the, so. So that, just to make it clear, it's not the city that's going to be directly involved in any of that formation process. Because it's going to be an effort by whoever the applicants and petitioners are to move that forward. So the city's not going to be the applicant or the petitioner.
But that is governed by a separate board, then?
Yes. We would no longer be the city department, we would be a separate fire district with an elected board of either three or five. And it would be my recommendation to make it a five-person board. That way you have a broader view on approvals and denials of requests and things.
Are they all at-large members?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Sorry to interrupt you. It's not that we would be this district, they would be the district, okay? So, and then we would have to figure out how we're going to interact with this new political subdivision. Same as what we do with the ambulance district.
Correct, right, right. It's basically a mirror of what the ambulance district would be, their own separate governing body, their own purchasing, their own insurances, their own everything.
I think one of the questions you brought up in the subcommittee meeting that we had was using fire, fire tag money to at least do the survey around the city. And we're not, we can't use, we can't spend our tax money, but that's the fire tag money. If you're interested in assisting, that would be something that the city could engage a surveyor in to find these boundaries to define where that fire protection district would be.
I haven't, I haven't looked into the legality of those expenses.
Right.
Because whether it's tax income or it's just city assets, I haven't, I haven't rendered opinions whether or not that would be appropriate use in the city's funds to spend money on the separate effort to create a new political entity. It may be, I just started to interrupt, I don't want to contradict you, I'm just not, I'm not, I just want everybody knows I haven't looked into that issue yet.
Right, right.
You would still envision just one firehouse for the?
I would say you'd have to start that way because you're going to have to get established as a district and find out how the budget works and what, what the board of directors that you would have voted in decides they want to do.
And then you sign mutual aid agreements with the other districts if they would be formed or with the associations if it wasn't formed?
Yeah, we would have to go through that, that's just a matter of getting approvals. That we're going to basically just switch names is what would mount to as far as mutual aid. Because we also have state mutual aid agreements with fire services statewide, and we also have conservation department, and we have numerous mutual aid agreements that we'd have to have the names legally changed on agreements. But I wouldn't proceed honestly as a fire district, other than the financing and maybe potentially hiring some people. I don't think there'd be much change in the way things operate from what we're doing now. Just have a little bit more funding available and reduce some of the liability exposure for the city.
Kenny, kind of addressing what Alderman Bennett said about the timing, how sure is the county in this April? Because they're going to be under the same gun we are with other issues on the ballot and stuff. I'm just wondering, is that something we can sit down with them and talk about?
Yeah, we can do that. Right now, their goal is April 20, April 25, but there's some legal stuff, they're waiting on attorney opinions. And the attorney that we're recommending that we use if we do this, actually setting up a timeline of what needs to be done by what times as far as surveys and financing and all that kind of stuff. They're going for, shooting for next 20, the 25th of April, but, April 25th. But there's no set in stone, that's when they're going for sure, that's their intentions right now.
Because that is a concern.
Yeah.
You know, with the timing, I mean, the positive side is now the city has your budget to work with in other areas and stuff, which we can find places to use quickly.
It could be looked at both ways on the bond issue being a hindrance. That could also help prove the point that the city doesn't have the money to fund what needs to be done in the fire department too. So I'm not saying it's a bad thing or a good thing, but that is a potential, we could look at it another time.
What's your, what's your total budget roughly?
Altogether, probably around $200,000, you think, Happy?
This year is like 424,000, so we have some grant money in there, but I mean, it's probably between 210,000 and 300,000.
Yeah, this year's budget, we budgeted for the potential of the handheld radios on the federal grant, so we had to show it in the.
We fund it through general revenue, that department's come through general revenue. So that money would come back to the city, then we'd still collect it under property levies, and so we would just be able to repurpose that under general.
Well, I mean, it's a combination of all your sales taxes and your market taxes, real estate taxes.
Slightly different, but on the same one. You know, we talked about the number of calls that you guys go on every year, you know, from 40, you know, 30 years ago to 200, 300, you know, that you guys are at now. And we've had this discussion before, but remind me, you guys are up to 300 because you have a variety of calls. Are you forced to make those calls? I mean, is this something that we can put back on the police department? Is this something we can put back on the ambulance district? Is it, you know, because you get these supporting calls and you guys are almost forced to make them?
As volunteers, we can only make what I have guys available for.
Yeah.
A lot of the.
It's not on you guys go because, you know, that's, you always felt that that would, you felt like that was your obligation. You don't have these obligations to go to support the ambulance district on these calls, correct?
We have a mutual aid agreement, we don't actually have a signed one, I never did sign that, that if we go for house fire, they automatically provide an ambulance for us. And this has just been a assist them. We don't do all the Band-Aid calls and things like that, all we do is actual life threats. So if they're unconscious or if they need CPR or those kind of things, the only call we actually go on unless they special ask us.
I mean, it puts a burden on you guys quite a bit, you know? And I don't know, I'm sure there's an argument for what the benefit is to us in your department for doing that, but I'd be curious what the quick response is, what is the benefit for us?
The way I see it, as your chief, is the bottom line is customer service. Whatever the customer needs, whatever we need to provide to them for the safety and the betterment of our community.
But for example, if the fire district or the ambulance district, you no longer did mutual aid for them, if they had to hire more staff, they would have to do that to do, provide their services, correct?
Not really. They're manning two or three stations right now, and honestly, they're having the same trouble trying to find a full-time people as we are as volunteers. The only time that we're actually a first responder and go out is if an outside ambulance is coming in from Wyngard or Bloomsdale and they need somebody there quick, that's the only time we get dispatched first ahead of them. Other than that, it's only if they ask us our life threats, unconscious CPRs. I don't, I don't know that we could cut back on anything and not lose some of the trust of the community plus the fact that we kind of joked about it when nobody else knows what to do, they call the fire department because we've got so many different variety of people that knows so many different things and we can handle so much more. And it's kind of the way of the world right now, the way the fire service is going. I can remember years ago where you didn't run any EMS calls at all, all you done was fires and that was it. And as the community grows and as the neighboring communities grow, the expectation on the fire services, hey, these guys are providing this, why aren't you type thing, it just kind of escalates to that point.
How long do you think you spent studying and putting this together? I know you've had several meetings with the county fire association chiefs for the last. How long do you think you spent studying and putting this together? And I know you've had several meetings with the county fire association chiefs for the last, you know, year.
Those are just kind of some of my notes, we've been talking about fire district back to the point where Kathy Walts was mayor, back when we were in the old station back in the early two thousands, because we were looking at bond issues and things, trying to fund trucks. And just to give you an idea on the cost of things, in nineteen seventy-three, we passed a two hundred thousand dollar bond issue. We bought a pumper, a van, the station, the building, that house, the old station, Bell Ever After, we bought the property, we bought twenty-four pagers, we bought twenty-four air packs, all for two hundred thousand dollars. In nineteen ninety-three, we passed a two hundred thousand dollar bond issue and we bought our nineteen ninety-three truck and still had to use sixty thousand out of our reserves to outfit it. And then, right now, we're talking about a one point two million dollar truck, it goes through, so the cost is just skyrocketing on everything.
What's the biggest drawback, Kenny, to doing this?
Probably getting out in the public and get the approval of the voters.
Let's, but if it passes, what's the biggest drawback to city residents?
It would, probably the question I would think would come up is, with the equipment that's currently owned by the city, what do you do with it? But drawbacks, I really don't see any because even if we don't hire people, it would still be at least status quo with what we're doing now. And yes, they would have to pay some tax money, but they would also have the budget put back in, fire department budget put back in to be used for other places.
What do you think the amount of fire tags for some of the bigger commercial entities, they pay multiple fire tags? But you're, you're thinking that there's potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars in extra fire tax-
If you go to a district, yeah.
Taxes would be collected from some of these other commercial entities if we went to a district.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head and I'm not trying to throw Mississippi Lime under the bus, but I think they do five or six fire tags a year and they do the commercial ones, so they're a hundred dollars or whatever per tag and-
But then you start looking what their assessed valuation is for Linda and-
Yeah, and we haven't done any hard numbers on that, that was just some rough ballpark numbers that we've talked about in the past as to what the potential is there for it.
But it's all commercial entities, I mean, if they're only paying one or two fire tags, commercial fire tags.
Places like La Hoist and Tire Rock, I think only does one tire, one tag per occupation.
There's lots of other commercial entities that, you know, and private landowners that have, you know, assessed value, you know.
How, how successful was the Wolf Creek initiative? Like, well, how did, how much did it?
I don't remember that number, Felix, she knows like sixty percent or something, close to seventy percent and then, you know, in our county, two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eighty people in our county that voted, eighty percent of those voted for her.
How much of a, of a majority do you need in that, for this particular, simple majority for that one?
I believe that's correct.
I know that changed for our bond issue, being an official election.
That maybe-
The type.
The type, yeah.
I know at my full-time job, they were talking about a pension and they were talking about going back in the fall and attempting it and there was like five sevens on that because it was a presidential election year or something, I don't know, I think it does vary. I think the simple majority would be the way we need to go if we do attempt this.
So what do you need from us and when?
Yeah, well, that was going to lead to my other, I mean, you, you kind of, a good segue, but are you going to have enough time to get all the surveying and the legal work done to get ready for April?
I, I believe we would, the first thing we would need to do is potentially put a retainer on the, the attorney and I would recommend the Vadrat company, I think Mark is aware of those people, they specialize in fire districts and they're the ones that handled Wolf Creeks. And talking to their chief, he said that's the only way to go. He walked in there and laid it all out on the table and the judge didn't really know what was going on, so he just took the word of the lawyer that this is what needs to be done and approved everything and then they took it to the vote.
Vadrat has had what we helped for, these, by October today, he's going to make, he'll make the timeline on how to do what and when so that we'd be ready for the people, like Mr. Bishop, so that that hundred, hundred signature petitions is the number one thing to get done. And then, and that would need to dig it down.
Okay, I would say for my purposes, our first thing would be making sure that the fire tax, I don't think, I don't think we can authorize anything about that one if there's even precedence on that, so we may discuss this at the next work session after we had a chance to-
We can get an opinion on that, we should bring it back. I mean, they, if they raise their own cash, I mean, they could, they could do this with the board.
Yeah, they don't need our help.
They don't need our, they're blessing either way then, the spending of city money.
Right, I think they're looking for some, to support the board as well.
But it doesn't require our blessing. I really appreciate our support.
Right, right.
Is that Vadrat the same one that we, that Mike and I?
Yeah, and he's actually to the point of being pretty much almost disabled, so his daughter Sarah is more or less taken over. She's the one that did most of the talking the night that we were out Wyngarden.
It seems like she knew her stuff.
I've dealt with Frank over the years, he's an excellent attorney and he represents a lot of, lot of fire districts. But again, that's, you aren't going to hire him, it's whatever this effort is going to be, whoever's leading that effort is going to be hiring him to do the petition. Because he's not going to be providing services to the city, unless you wanted an outside consultant to advise you how to interact with them, but I don't think there's a need for that. I can get you certainly a legal opinion before the next meeting, well in advance the next meeting, as far as what city funds could, if I could find, it's, it's a unique question, you know, what city funds could be used to be transferred to an effort to form a political subdivision?
Are those city funds?
Yeah.
Rural fire tags, are rural fire tags that were paid into us, they're in our accounts as city funds, right?
Yeah. So the source is really irrelevant once it's our assets.
You have more flexibility of what you can use those on, but they're still city funds.
Sure, yeah. It's, I, I, hopefully I can find something that's on, I mean, I'll have to research it because it's, it's a, it's a unique issue, it's not, you know, like, there's, there's a lot of statutory and authority in case law with regard to intergovernmental agreements, but this isn't even an intergovernmental agreement because there's no governmental entity that exists yet. So, I really don't know off the top of my head whether or not we can use city funds to help create a separate political entity. It's, it's, my sense is that it's more of a political expenditure as opposed to city services or city expenses or something for the benefit of the city because it's really for political effort to create, I mean, what is subdivision, that's just, they go off the top of my head, so that's why I kind of want to jump in, let you know. We all look into that a little bit, because it is a unique question.
I got to tell you, if the builder, the district, or the, or no one, you guys hate to spend that money now, right, anything with fire?
Yeah, I mean, well, that's revenue, the, the income we have could be, could be used for the city purposes. What I'm, what I'm saying is that this effort is not to provide services to the public. This, this effort is to create an entity that would then provide services to the public and I don't know the answer.
And whether or not the city mentioned that from the association, that they can use that association money, they can't use anything else.
Well, as far as the, the private associations now, I, I don't know what their, what their structure is because I don't represent them, but I think some of them might be nonprofit corporations technically, yeah. So, so they're not going to have the same restrictions that a political subdivision is going to have with regard to our assets because there are restrictions on government providing assets to private people, the private, there was no direct benefit to, to the city or the city residents, and I don't mean that the effort wouldn't benefit us eventually. What I'm saying is that there are different restrictions for public funds than there are for private funds. And if there's a private association, it's a nonprofit corporation, those restrictions aren't going to be present that would be present for, for city funds.
We'd almost be acting as like a PAC.
Very, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that far because it's, it's, but it's, I was just saying off the top of my head, it, it, I'm a little concerned with it before I've done any research, but I'm not saying you can't do it yet, but, but don't be surprised if that opinion comes down in that way. Just because it's, it's not, it doesn't exist yet, it's not, and we're not supporting an effort from another public entity to provide services in, in the community. You know, like you mentioned, the, the exchange for the visitor center, well, that's another public entity that exists and is providing those services which are really overlapping what we did with the visitor center before. There's, there's statutory authority for those kind of transfers, you know, that you can enter into intergovernmental agreements, but this is not an intergovernmental agreement because there's no other, there's no government on the other side yet.
But we could sign an intergovernmental agreement after they were, the district was formed.
Absolutely, and, and you're going to, you're going to have to address those issues with regard to the personnel and the property, the equipment and all that.
Yeah.
And then you're going to have, you have some decisions to make at the back end of that as to what's in the best interest of the city's taxpayers, or that's more of a policy issue, but you're going to have the authority to enter into agreements in that manner.
For sure. Kenny, you talked about a, a five-person board. You know, how does that come about and, and how do we, well, I mean, we can't as the city because it's a separate entity then and so, so how do, how do we, or how does those five people get in that position?
The one in Wolf Creek, basically it was their association, board members, they just put their names up for election and they elected them in. You would have to put word out there that you're looking for board members to run and it would basically, from my understanding, be similar to an alderman race where you're taking nominations or you put your name down that you want to do this and you run, just like any other political offices, best I know.
It's, it's an election, they can get it at the same time.
Yeah.
Election in for tax, or for district and the board meet at the same time.
So those board members could be fire department members?
No, you cannot be a board member as long as you're an active firefighter or part of a, that, support part of the district itself. I've been asked about being board members on other districts because I'm still currently employed as a firefighter in a full-time district, I cannot do that. So it would have to be general public or businessman or whoever.
Somebody who lives in the district, that's not mine.
Yeah. In the district, wouldn't have to be within the city limits either, if we encompass the rural area, they could be from the rural area outside their city limits also, as long as they're within the coverage area that we designate.
Have you gotten any pushback from any of the other county departments that want part of that territory that we now have?
No, right now it's all a gentleman's agreement that they, they know we're interested in doing it too and if we decide not to do it and they are talking to Mr. Vadrat, he will probably inform them that they have that option, that they could come in and do it and that we would lose rural fire tags. As far as the rest of the participation in the rest of the fire departments, they understand where we're coming from, we would have liked to have been all one, but they understand that we can't justify it with ISO change, so they understand that we're going out and they're going to give us our boundaries for now, but if we don't do something and they find out from Mr. Vadrat, they could potentially take our rural coverage area. This is my understanding, and by no means, I'm not an attorney, I don't know all these answers for sure, but that's from what I've researched and what I've heard.
So this tax amount or there's restrictions on that of how much you can assess or there's a variation in that amount?
Yeah, it's my understanding that when you voted in, it gets voted in at thirty cents, which is a standard amount brought in and then you also have to follow Hancock Amendment and everything where if you bring in too much, you'd have to roll your tax rate back, so. But I'm, I'm not a tax attorney by any means either on that, but it, it does come in at thirty cents as valuation, assessed valuation on a hundred dollars.
So the, the initial vote will generally be the question, do you support creating the district with that tax? And then you have a second question as far as the candidates.
Yeah.
On the same ballot. And the, the candidates could just be like a three-member board, you could end up with three candidates, you could have ten, it was like any other at-large district, like school board nowadays.
So Kenny, you know that the city is basically trying to add some rooftops. Taking, you know, adding a hundred plus possible rooftops in the near future, how much further is that going to stretch to municipal fire department?
Any house you add is going to potentially add a call for us.
Could add some new, very eager volunteers to join this department though.
I would hope so, but I wouldn't bet on that. There, there is always, always potential, we could get volunteers out of it, but more of the younger people are tied up with family and everything else and there's not as many young people volunteering anymore, the last couple volunteers I've gotten have joined, been in the thirty and forty-year-old range already.
Okay, so-
Maybe we can put a covenant in the new subdivision where they have to serve two years and then-
No, you can't.
Oh, we got a legal opinion on that. So, i- if I'm kind of summarizing here, sounds like we need to get an opinion on the funding of the effort to form the district, from there we can determine what we can and cannot do financially the city, I guess.
Correct, and they also want to make a decision on what you want to do.
But if, I mean, if they have reserve funds to, to campaign for that on their own, it wouldn't, wouldn't need it.
Like if you wanted to have pass a resolution in support of it or something.
Sure. So, chief, if we had that answers for you at the next meeting, that's not going to hinder your ability to get all of your ducks in a row for an April election.
It shouldn't.
That's what I'm concerned about, is that we do right by you. We know, because obviously there is a lot to do, judging by what you told us, so I just want to make sure we're doing right by you. If we did have answers for you at the next meeting, which would be the twenty-third, that would give you enough time still, I know it's only a couple of weeks, but-
That, that would be a good thing. Felix's discussion with Vadrat, he's basically saying that the first thing we need to do is go ahead and get the legal consent, consent and retainers paid and then from there go into the survey, which shouldn't take more than a month, and then that gives you time to start working the other things. And if I get the approval to start moving forward with this, the first thing we need to do then is also form a committee. And I would recommend having like an alderman from the city, myself as a chief, a couple of businessmen, maybe an insurance agent or something, form a committee to kind of work on this thing.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Kevin, I think it needs to be stated that it's not the city's effort.
Yeah.
Right, and maybe it's just my attorney's ears, but it's not, as the fire chief of the city, it's not we. It's, it's, you, you may assist that, but it's not the city's effort, right?
I've just recommended an alderman so they know what the history was.
I'm not criticizing you in any way, I just, just want to make sure that, that you understand your role is not going to be to run this effort.
Yes.
As, as a full-time employee, city employee.
Right.
You help out, you know, that kind of stuff, but it's, it's going to be somebody.
I think it would be better received from the community if it was a business person that was the chair of this committee anyhow, just with some advice or recommendations from others.
All right, so I think that will be our plan, just to have you answers. So I think that will be our plan, just to have you answers at our next meeting on the 23rd and then we can kind of discuss future steps from there. Sound fair?
Yeah.
Chief, I appreciate all the information and you obviously did a lot of research to put this together, so I appreciate it. Enjoyed our conversation the other night as well too, just kind of learning a little more about ISO rates.
I've offered it before too, and I always offer anybody that's a new alderman or hasn't been out there before, come out and visit us, especially on a Wednesday night. We're out there every Wednesday night doing maintenance and we can tour you through and tell you how we operate and what we do and give you more insight on the fire department because we are kind of out in our own little world out there, but you guys are always welcome, even older aldermen, if you want to come by and visit. I know Alderman Rainey's come by a few times, Alderman Donovan's come by a few times. You guys are welcome out there anytime. City owns the building. We don't, so come out anytime, visit us. And feel free to give me a call or ask any questions outside this board meeting too. If you have some come up, I can try to do some more research for you or give you whatever answers you need.
Sure.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, chief. Any other topics of discussion anybody would like to discuss at this time?
Yeah, one-
Yes, if you guys want to see it.
The, our bond initiative, I don't know if we're going to be forming any type of committee to work on educational material for the bond issue. I sent you a very late email, but I don't, we need to get moving on that ASAP. I think we should have probably already had something going on. And then if we're also going to separate privately, try to get a grassroots, non-city run, you know, for Chamber or if they want to participate, you know, me and the-
Or the IDC and the Chamber.
Rotary Clubs, things like Lions Club.
Do we have a high-level overview of what we're asking?
Besides $10 million for street improvements?
More nitty-gritty stuff, I mean.
So we presented twice the list of streets that we can perfect, just needs to be drafted in a more pleasing manner than what we put together, but I mean, it's just a rough draft at this point.
And then what lays out the impact to the taxpayer?
Right.
Yeah. I think maybe just a summarization of that we can start to work on, probably having a meeting or something like that with the IDC. But I think they can be a pretty big champion for that cause.
Can we have some milestones and some timelines as far as when we should be having this stuff, maybe at least by the next meeting, if not sooner?
Sure. I mean, I can discuss with the IDC. I guess. I think, I think it's important they're in the fold, I mean, in the chamber as well.
I think a lot of the other civic and social organizations-
Oh, sure, yeah.
Get involved with, on the grassroots side with it as well, so.
And I did have a brief discussion with the Rotary Club about it, but we didn't get into a lot of details at that time, but we did, we brought it up that it was coming and that, you know, kind of, it was more high-level than, it was probably about what you just said, we're asking for $10 million for this. And we didn't really get into it, but you know, we're just more or less getting the word out.
And I won't beat some of the general public to, before they start rumors and misinformation or whatever the buzzword is.
Yep.
So we can kind of fight back with good information.
Then I'll reach out to the IDC and I will discuss with the Chamber and then-
Set something up then and maybe meet with them in the next week or two?
Sure, yeah. Prior to, prior to our next meeting, I believe that's-
Maybe bring something back to the board and tell them what we've-
And then Kathy, would you, you want to be a part of those meetings as well?
So I just-
I know you love meetings.
Love, yeah. Meeting after meeting. What I have to do is make sure that I stay neutral in this, in that what I'm giving people is educational information, I am not proposing, I'll proponent for that issue. So just keep that in mind that I don't mind putting stuff together, but I'm, and I can get out and talk to groups and organizations, but I cannot advocate for passage of this. But I can tell them what it's for, what we're looking at, deficits that we have, that sort of stuff.
Okay. Well, if maybe there's a way to compile that information and then we can, that way we can get that information to the IDC, get the information to the Chamber and then we can, you know, have them start to-
Yeah. I think our sense of urgency on this will show the citizens how serious we are, how much of a dire situation that we are in and that needs to pass. And so I feel like we need to show that sense of urgency on it. I don't know how everybody else feels.
I agree. I think things like fire, most people, how could you vote against having a healthy fire department if you're not in your own self-interest? I think they have much higher chance of passing that bond, they'll fix somebody else's streets.
I agree. We must give them this order, fire department.
We hope.
Well, and you hear the numbers, 70, 80% passage. That's a landslide.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Oh, do we need to sing?
No, that's okay.
Oh.
Thank you.
Were we going to sing?
Yeah.
Did I miss the cue? Did you bring your-
We were supposed to start.
Oh, I was. I thought you as the resident musician here would get your tuning, what do we call that? Yeah, there you go. Yeah. All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay. We'll go ahead and adjourn.